I will now call the May 6th of 2013, Blue Springs City Council Meeting to Order. We're going to stand, observe a moment of silence, and then the cadets in the Civil Air Patrol will come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you want to start making your way up, why don't you go ahead and do that, and then I will cue you on when to start. Now we're going to observe a moment of silence, and when I turn around, then we can start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Want to thank the cadets for coming up and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so come back and see us again. That was done with such precision, let's get them around. Again, want to welcome you and those of you in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on Cable TV 7 to tonight's City Council Meeting. The next item is the consent agenda. Are there items that need to be pulled? If not, I accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Row call, please.
Councilman Flora.
Aye.
Councilman Levinson.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Paul Pitzer.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a resolution, number 39-2013, approving Pink Hill Park Facility. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? We're going to turn it over to Dennis. We're going to be honoring Craig Naylor. I saw him coming in with his family, so Craig, if you would, come up.
Too many papers.
You've got a bunch.
Yeah. This is a resolution approving the renaming of the Pink Hill Park Maintenance Facility at Pink Hill Park to the Craig Naylor Parks and Building Maintenance Facility. This resolution says, whereas Craig Naylor was hired as the Park Superintendent in 1980 and served in the position for 32 years until his retirement on May 15th, 2012, and whereas when Craig Naylor was first hired, Blue Springs had nine developed parks, and today it has 13 developed parks, six undeveloped parks, and open space areas totaling 855 acres. And whereas Craig Naylor was instrumental in the development of the park system and the community enjoys today, and he also provided maintenance and upkeep to all city-owned buildings and grounds, as well as landscaping of the parkways and rideways throughout the community, and whereas through Craig Naylor's leadership and management, a staff of 13 full-time and 14 seasonal employees with honesty, integrity, and a positive vision for the future, and whereas the Blue Springs Park Commission unanimously approved the renaming of the Park Maintenance Facility in Pink Hill Park to the Craig Naylor Parks and Building Maintenance Facility.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman, for this recognition that you've given me. Thank you, Eric and Todd, where are you, and Christine from the administration area. And first, certainly, I want to thank the Parks and Recreation Department under Roscoe Ryder's leadership, and Pam Buck, she's been here with me for years, and then Verandy, and of course, my staff that I've worked with for years. I'm very appreciative of this reward, recognition. Yesterday, my family and I, we were in Greenville, South Carolina, and we traveled back to Blue Springs yesterday. And we encountered some weather-related issues that we had to put up along the way, and even believe on Sunday, there were even some construction delays on a Sunday. And so, we finally worked our way across South Carolina, and North Carolina, and Tennessee, and Kentucky, and Illinois. We finally got to Missouri. Said, well, we are really getting close to home, we're at least in Missouri. And so, we finally got down to where it was about 14 hours, we'd been in the vehicles, and we were tired, and we were worn out, and yet we came across this sign that says, "Blue Springs, Missouri." So many miles. And it was just brought a, refreshed your spirit, is that, you know, we were getting close to home. And we were worn out, but you know, we had that vision of being home. And we have chose to call this our home. We moved here in late 1979, and chose to raise our family here and to work here, and we've been very blessed in working with Roscoe and the other staff members here in the Parks and Recreation Department, and saw it really grow, and saw its development, and it was just a real blessing. We raised our three children here. And to be recognized in this capacity is really just a real blessing to me. So I thank each one of you, and those that I mentioned, with Roscoe and the staff that were here that supported us through the year, there's the guys that actually did the work. And of course, I thank my family, my wife, and my three children, too. They've been an integral part of my life, too. So again, thank you very much for this special recognition.
You are very deserved. Next, we have a presentation by the Grain Valley Civil Air Patrol.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Major Burrows. I'm a group commander for Missouri Wing, Group One. What that means is that I'm in charge of approximately 300 airmen, seven squadrons ranging from all the way up at Rosenkrantz Air Force Base down to Cass County. I'm here to talk to you all today briefly because we have a new opportunity that's presented itself, and I wanted you to be aware of it. We're opening a new squadron at the Grain Valley Airport. And for those of you who are not familiar with Civil Air Patrol, it is the auxiliary of the US Air Force. We have a congressional charter, and as such, we have three primary missions. One is cadet programs, second is emergency services, and the third is aerospace education. We are underwritten to a degree by the Air Force. We also are funded in part by charitable donations. But being an Air Force program, we're very similar to programs that you have here at Blue Springs currently, with junior IOTC. How we differ is that we are year-round, okay? Our squadrons typically meet on a weekly basis, we usually have weekend activities, we have national encampments, we have powered flight academies, glider school, we have Space Camp at the Jet Propulsion Lab down in Alabama, we have Para Rescue School, which I went to as a cadet, Blue Beret, Hawk Mountain Ranger School, a variety of great programs for both our senior members and our youth. Something that I think that could impact Blue Springs as a community, though, is our impact with regard to emergency services. Currently, we perform over 90 percent of the North American search and rescue missions through the Air Force, working in conjunction with CIMA and FEMA and local government. I am currently working with Jackson County and Mark, Mid-America Regional Council, with regard to emergency services and preparedness. We have an office out of the Independence EOC, and we're looking at, with the Grain Valley opportunity of establishing a permanent radio base, and also possibly housing some aircraft. Group One, we currently have three aircraft. We have a Glass Poput 182 with about 100 hours on it, brand spanking new, it's beautiful. We've got a 172 that's up at Rosenkrantz, and then we also have a Gypson GA-8 air van which seats eight. We're looking at having FLUR capabilities. Some of you may know what FLUR is from how we caught the Boston bomber hanging out inside that boat, they could look right through it for his heat signature, we'll have that capability. We do a lot of aerial recon for National Guard when there's flooding and a variety of other things. So we are here as a service to you. My primary reason for being here is to let you know that the squadron is being instituted. We would love your recognition and your support. We're here for you, and anything that you can do for us, we'd also appreciate. We're utilizing this as an opportunity to essentially extend STEM opportunities, science, technology, engineering, and math to the youth, in addition to what they may be getting in their schools. And so you're aware, we are putting people at the academies, the service academies, US Military Academy, Air Force Academy. We currently have a person who's been nominated, not only by his congressman, but by both senators, which is highly unusual, and we're very proud of that. I'll also say this much, with regard to Group One, we have one squadron that is the Squadron of Distinction, another squadron is Squadron of Merit. What that means is, of the seven squadrons that I manage, one is the best squadron out of seven wings. To give you an idea, we have 34 squadrons in Missouri Wing alone. So this is the best squadron in seven of those wings. We've got another squadron that's the best squadron in this wing. So we're working hard to provide the best programs available to the youth of our communities. We have an open house on May 13th, it's from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the Grain Valley Airport. We would love to see you or anybody that'd be able to come out there and visit with us. Snacks and drinks will be provided, and if you all have any questions, I'd hear from
you. Are there any questions? If not, thank you for coming and sharing.
Thank you so much.
... information with us, and hopefully the community will be aware of it and be able to support your efforts.
Thank you.
As well as you supporting us.
Appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Next, we have a presentation on the citizen survey. You know, the Royals are doing so well right now, so we're looking for another home run.
Mayor members of the council, I'm Chris Tatham with ETC Institute. It's great to be back. For those of you who aren't familiar with our firm, we're actually based over in Alatha. Our very first community survey was done for the city of Blue Springs back in probably 1987, 1988. Since then, we've surveyed a couple million people across the United States. We now do work for about 200 to 300 cities and counties every year. 11 of the 20 largest cities and 10 of the 20 largest counties are our clients, and we now have offices in Phoenix, Austin, Chicago, and here in Kansas City. So it's a pleasure to be back here to the place that we started doing these. And what really impresses me the most about the city of Blue Springs is you continue to do these, good or bad. I don't always come with great news. Some of you have been here to hear that when it wasn't such good news, but I'm really pleased tonight to tell you, there's lots of good news. You're doing lots of things right, and so that's the high level, and I'll kind of walk you through that in a little bit. Just to bring you up to speed, if you're not real familiar with the survey, give you a little background of the methodology, a little bit why it's done, then I'm going to go through some of the high-level findings, and in case you're not feeling really attentive, I'll put those all up front and then tell you how you got there and come back to them at the end, so that way at least you'll know our major conclusions. But the bottom line is the city's clearly doing a lot of good things, and it's a pleasure to be here to let you know that tonight. As far as the purpose of the survey, I think most of you are familiar, it really gives you an objective assessment of what residents think. The reality is, is most residents never come to a city meeting, they never talk to you, and frankly, if things are being done just the way they want them, they never say a thing. You typically hear to the people who aren't happy, or people who want changes to be made, but if those are the only people you hear from, though important, you can actually go off in the wrong direction. So being committed to doing a survey like this on a regular basis really allows you to objectively think, what do the broader residents think? Especially when you're not sure, and so this really gives you an objective measurement over time. It lets you see how you're stacking up to other communities, get feedback about what priorities are, and I know the city's used it very aggressively the last several years. In fact, I can see how you responded to needs very effectively, and I'll highlight some of those as we go through the presentation tonight. As far as the methodology, this year's methodology was the same as it's been in previous years. Our goal is to get about 600 households at random to participate in the survey. We actually had a little over 600 complete it this year. The survey's not perfect, but it has an accuracy of about plus or minus 4 percent at the 95 percent level of confidence. And that means if we did the survey the same way 100 times, 95 times out of 100, you get the same results within 4 percent. So it's pretty accurate, and it's a similar tool, so when we look at trends, we're also looking at how things in the community have changed, and this gives us an objective baseline for saying things have gotten better, or whether things have gotten worse. As far as the distribution, when I first started doing these surveys, I always got the question, is nobody in my neighborhood that I talked to got surveyed, so we came up with GIS technology, so you can now actually see that we have good representation from the all three districts. You can see we have good distribution where people live, we have respondents, where people don't live, we don't have respondents. So you're actually able to break down the results by location. We've prepared a number of maps. I'm not going to go through them all tonight, but if you actually want to see how people in certain parts of the city responded in more detail, that's certainly going to be made available. These are the major conclusions this year. Bottom line is residents have a very positive perception of the city. I think it's something you can be very proud of. I think the overall strategic health of the city is definitely on the move up. I think this is going to be a more and more desirable place for people to stay, which means you're going to retain your current residents, likely attract new ones, because the image and everything else, the community continues to improve. You're clearly on the right direction. We've seen 10 percent, in some cases 20 percent increases in some of the areas that were most important to residents over the past few years. It was really impressive, and the fact that you've made these gains over the past four, five, six years during the one of the most difficult times in our country's history really shows that you're doing things right. You're now setting the standard in a number of areas that are assessed on the survey, but to stay there, many of your priorities are going to stay the same. Still, maintenance of your infrastructure, your planning, traffic flow issues continue to be high priorities, but from talking to your staff, you have a lot of things planned to continue to address those. So I think you're doing very, very, lots of things right. Reason I can say those, reach those findings are the following. First, these are what we call our strategic indicators on the survey. We ask residents to rate their satisfaction with a number of kind of high-level aspects of the community, and everything from quality of life to quality of city services, image of the city, value for taxes, I won't read the entire list to you. And we ask people to rate things on a scale of one to five. The fours and fives are positive responses, and they're shaded in blue. Ones and twos are negative, and they're shaded in red. Nobody actually says they're neutral, it's just people saying, "I rated a three on a five-point scale." And a three's an okay response, it means you're meeting people's expectations, the person seems to be informed about the service, but you're not exceeding their expectations. And what I want you to take away from this chart are a couple of the ones that I think are most important. Overall quality of city services, if you add the 16 and 55, 71 percent of your residents are giving you positive ratings, only 8 percent are dissatisfied. So for every person you hear that says the city's services are not good, there's nine people out there that you're probably not hearing that feel exactly the opposite. In addition, value for tax dollars, that's not something normally people go around bragging about, "I love the value I pay for my tax dollars." There's only 14 percent of the residents, one in seven, gave dissatisfied ratings, and over 55 percent, or 56 percent gave positive ratings. So basically, a four to one ratio there. So you're doing a lot of things right, and I'll show you in a little bit the direction that you're headed is very, very favorable. In addition, when you look at the major categories of city services, you'll see that all services, with the exception of traffic flow and the maintenance of your streets and sidewalks, have very, very low levels of dissatisfaction. We measure that by having a percentage of dissatisfaction of 15 percent or less. In fact, you'll see fire, ambulance, city parks, police services, water, sewer, most of the items at the top have 60 to 70 percent or more of your residents giving you favorable ratings. The other thing that you can be very proud of is the amount of brand equity that you're now building. And brand equity is based on the percentage of folks who give you a rating of five out of a five. And you'll notice that for the majority of the services up there, more than 20 percent of your residents give you a five on a five-point scale. And you might say, "Well, why does brand equity matter?" Well, it makes a big difference as to whether you can sustain difficult times. In other words, communities that have strong brand equity, residents tend to give the city the benefit of the doubt when there's a problem. Communities that don't have strong brand equity, residents blame the city for everything that goes wrong. Good example is, two summers ago, city of Kansas City, Missouri, which at the time was struggling with its brand equity, had a water main break. It was covered by the local media, and we do quarterly surveys for them, and their satisfaction rating dropped, I think, 8 percent following that water main break. Three weeks later, Water One in Johnson County also had a water main break, issued a boil order, had the same media coverage, their satisfaction rating went up 1 percent. And you might say, "It was exactly the same situation, why the difference?" In one community, residents blamed the city, and said it was the city's fault, the city should have prevented the brain break, and the other one, the residents assumed this county couldn't have done anything to prevent it, and they were pleased with the fact that they told them not to drink the poisonous water. So at the end of the day, brand equity does a lot for you, and this city is really starting to build substantial brand equity in the direction you're headed. In addition, we just looked at some basic statements about things in the city, I won't read all of these to you, but I think when you look at that second one, "Commercial areas in the city are better off than five years ago." Look at 83 percent said strongly agree or agree, only 6 percent disagreed. I mean, that's a real transformation in the attitude of residents toward the city's development, which you can be very, very proud of. In addition, we looked at the satisfaction of the business community, you can see overall perceptions of the atmosphere of businesses, the city is a place to work, and the quality of shopping opportunities in the city, very little negativity, and people generally feel good about all of these areas. And the result of that, I think clearly you can claim that this city has the positive perception it needs to sustain the momentum that you're moving forward in right now. So with that said, I'm going to shift to the next major conclusion, is the overall satisfaction, though there are some differences for specific issues, if you hear people telling you that overall the city really neglects their part of the city compared to another part, it's not true. In fact, when we mapped the overall ratings for city services, what we did is we looked at the mean rating by census block group, and then we shaded it different colors. And blue means that the typical person is satisfied, the yellow or off-white color indicates that they gave average ratings, and if there was orange or red, that would indicate that people were dissatisfied. And what I want to point you out on this chart is, almost the entire city is the same color, and that's very, very rare. Usually, there are certain pockets that are substantially neglected by cities, and when you see the entire city just about being the same color, that means you're doing a good job of equitably providing services to people regardless of where they live. So though you may hear some complaints, the complaints really reflect the minority of residents, and you're doing a good job, given the resources you have, making sure different parts of the city are equitably served. As far as the third conclusion, that you're heading in the main direction, you might say, "Well, Chris, what do you base that on?" Well, several things I look at, and most importantly are the trends in your survey data going back to 2007. Again, these are the major indicators that I showed to you up front, and this is the percentage of residents who gave positive ratings. I'm not showing the threes here, the threes you show that, this doesn't mean that there's, for example, at the bottom one, cities planning for its future growth, 48 percent give positive, doesn't mean 52 gave negative ratings, it's the threes aren't shown. But when we first started doing this survey back in 2007, or at least the most recent indicators, only one in four residents felt positively about the way the city was planning for its future growth. Now 48, or nearly double that, feel that way. So you've got one in two residents feeling good. As far as how you're managing growth, it's gone from 30 to 53 percent, value for taxes from 41 to 56, the image of the city's gone up 20 points in the last six years, the overall quality of city services up 11 points, and quality of life has also gone up 12 points. So the end of the day, residents feel much better, not only about the city, but feel much better about living here, and I think that's a really healthy position to be in. And what you've done is accomplished this all during the most difficult economic period in our nation's history. Something to be coveted. I think a lot of communities, when they start seeing the results of this city, are going to wonder, "How did Blue Springs do all of that during the last five to six years?" Because I haven't seen results like this really from any other community during this period of time. In addition, we look at some of your major categories of city services, you're going to see lots of blue arrows up here, that shows statistically significant trends just since the last survey from 2010. If you look at most services back to 2006, you'll see the long-term trend is very, very positive, but everything from your water and sewer utilities, maintenance of your buildings and facilities, stormwater, communication, your enforcement of building and property maintenance code, community planning, and infrastructure maintenance have all seen significant improvements. For example, look at the effectiveness of community planning, it's gone from 32 percent to 53 percent, over a 20 percent improvement in a very, very short period of time. And so, I think you've got a lot to be proud of, the way you're engaging the public in the decisions and the processes you've had in planning for the city's future. When you look at a couple other areas, I'm not going to go through all the trends, given our time limitations, but in the last survey, I came up here, last time I here, I said you need to look at communication, issues of maintenance, code enforcement, your leadership, your vision, how you're planning for the city. I said, "These are things I think you should really focus on." So I thought, "You know what? I'm going to look at my notes from the last survey and see how the city did in each of those areas." Well, first thing is communication. You'll see that every area of communication, generally outside your cable channel, has seen significant improvements since we first started tracking the survey. Your Blue Springs magazine is up, and the user-friendliness of the city's web page is up from 57 to 73 percent, showing me that you're actually changing to respond to rising expectations. It's hard to make your website get better ratings because people expect more and more every year, so the fact that you're getting better while expectations are rising suggests you're being responsive to those needs. So you're doing better in communication. What about maintenance? Take a look at the maintenance of major city streets, that's up significantly from the last survey, 52 to 60 percent. Perceptions of downtown have gone from 35 to 56. Maintenance of city buildings from 62 to 71, and the overall perception of your traffic signals and street signs from 67 to 74. That was your top priority in the last survey, and you've made big gains in areas that residents cared the most about within that category. In addition, when it comes to code enforcement, that was a big challenge in previous surveys, you clearly are tackling it. Take a look at the enforcement of sign regulations, is up 14 points. Maintenance of business properties up 14 points. Mowing and trimming on private property is up eight points, and maintenance of residential property in neighborhoods is also up eight points. And code enforcements are really hard one to address, so whatever you're doing is certainly responding to residents' expectations for this category. And the impact that this has had on perceptions of city leadership, dramatic. You've gone from having about a third of your residents feel positive about city leadership to almost two-thirds in some cases, well over half. You'll see, you see, of the overall perception of the effectiveness of city administrator and staff is up 20 points. Elected officials, the leadership of elected officials is up 25 points, and you see effectiveness of boards and commissions is up 22 points. So hats off to you, that doesn't come. I don't know if I've seen any increases in such a short period of time on this question. A lot of communities don't like to even show the results of this question, but frankly, you've done a lot of good things, and I think your work and your planning and involving the community is the reason that you're seeing the rewards on this question. And finally, planning and zoning, you might recall, what do we do? I remember Eric asking me, "Chris, what does this mean?" I say, "You come up with a vision, figure out where you're going, and you can clearly see that the city has done that." You'll see that the areas with the quality of new commercial building designs is up 16 points, perceptions of the types of new commercial and retail development in the city are up seven points, and the types of new residential development in the city is up 15 points. So again, just the way you're planning and moving forward, people feel much, much better now than they did just a few years ago. So congratulations on moving in the right direction. And some of the benefits of moving in the right direction, you're now setting the standard for performance in a number of areas. In fact, when it looks at the overall issues related to quality of city services, you'll see the national and the regional average are just 54 and 57 percent. You're at 71 percent, nearly 20 points above the local average. And when it comes to value for tax dollars, the average resident, and the average community in the Kansas City area only has four in 10 residents giving positive ratings, you have nearly six in 10 at 56 percent. So you're doing some great things in that area. And when it comes to how you stack up, you'll see overall quality of services and value are far to the right of that vertical line, which means you're one of the top performer in each of those two areas. And those are really what I consider to be the most important questions when assessing the overall health of a city government. When you look at the individual services that were assessed, fire, ambulance, parks, I guess I won't read the entire list to you, but you'll notice that every service except for one has a blue arrow next to it, meaning that you're outperforming your significant for one has a blue arrow next to it, meaning that you're outperforming, you're significantly above the average in each of those areas. And you'll see the customer service rating at seventy-six percent is twenty points above, or more than twenty points above the national average. That shows me that you have a culture among your employees that's very responsive to residents, and it really shows that residents in this community think highly of the employees with whom they interact. You'll see maintenance of streets and sidewalks is about average, but remember where you were and how much progress you've made, so you're now pretty much on par with other communities, but there are still some opportunities to do a little better. When it comes to public safety, feeling of safety in the neighborhoods at night, overall perception of local traffic lows are above average, you'll see ambulance responsiveness is a little bit below average, and visibility in police and retail areas also lags behind. And I know that's one of the questions the city's trying to figure out, well, what do you do there? What I found typically is the visibility issue is much more an issue about education. Residents in this community generally feel safe, they feel good about your public safety services, but when we asked them, do they see the police driving around in their neighborhoods or in retail areas, they're not as likely to in some other communities, and it may be that they don't know why. And so typically, the visibility, it's an education issue more than anything else. When it comes to maintenance, take a look at maintenance of city streets, you're now above average. You were significantly below average a few years ago. Cleanliness of city streets, you can see you're significantly above there, snow removal on city streets also significantly above average, a little below on city sidewalks, but you're moving in the right direction. It's gotten better since we first started assessing that a few years ago. Parks and Recreation, your pools, walking and biking trails in parks, all significantly above the averages, outdoor athletic fields, other than Hidden Valley, a little bit below average, but you can see it's on par with other communities in the Kansas City area. And when it comes to code enforcement, your first perception might be, oh, we're just okay, but remember the chart I showed you back on trends where we have double-digit increases. You've actually gone from being way below average on code enforcement to now pretty much being on par. So there's still opportunities to do better, but you moved in the right direction to the point where this no longer stands out as a deficiency for Blue Springs compared to other communities. Now, as you move forward, you might ask, well, what should we focus on? Well, what I always like to take a look is not just what the ratings of the survey are, but how much do residents care about those services? And the reason I do this is, let's say that you get really low ratings in an area that nobody cares about. You could spend a billion dollars in that area and nobody would care about what you did. In fact, they might not like the fact that you spent a billion dollars on something they didn't care about. So really, the key to be successful, if you're trying to manage your overall satisfaction rating, is to maximize your investments, not just in dollars, but in resources, in education, what you tell residents, in the areas they care highly about, where your performance is somewhat lower. And we've got a couple ways to look at this, depending if you're a left or right-brain learner. If you like lists, this is basically an equation that we have, and if you see that column that says important satisfaction rating, that essentially tells you what kind of the marginal return is for each item, if you were to invest or educate residents on that area compared to others. And you can see where you get your biggest return would be on maintenance, traffic flow, then community planning, then as you work your way down, you have kind of property maintenance issues, police services, and this doesn't mean the services at the bottom of the list aren't important. You'll see, for example, fire services second to the bottom, but people are so satisfied with fire services right now, they don't really see a need for increased investment. If for some reason, though, you need to increase your investment in fire, this tells you need to educate residents so they'll understand why, because right now, they wouldn't think it's a big issue. Similarly, you may be doing some things in the areas at the very top that if residents don't understand that what you're doing, you're losing the opportunity to educate them because they care about those issues. Now, if you're more a right-brained and like pictures, same information, and there's both sets of data in the report, if you like to see it, but essentially here, we plotted everything from the left to the right is the relative importance. So everything to the right of the vertical line is more important on average, and then as you go from the bottom to top, that's the satisfaction rating. So things on the bottom have lower ratings than the items on the top, and you'll see those same three items, community planning, management of congestion, and maintenance of streets and sidewalks are the areas identified as opportunities for improvement. Again, that's because these are more important on average, but you're not performing as well, so investments in education in these areas are going to have a bigger impact on your overall satisfaction rating than things in areas like ambulance service. Hopefully, that makes sense to everyone. Now, some of the other things that we found from the survey, and we've actually done that for several different areas, for today, I'm not going to break it out for parks and police, but that is in the full report if you're interested, but we did have a few other questions that really aren't performance-related, but just to let you know what residents think about certain issues. One is how they get information about city events, and you'll see with the decline of the newspaper, which has gone from fifty percent in 2010 to just a little over a third today, the Blue Springs magazine's becoming even more important. A lot of times, people think that really surprises them, but what's nice is you actually control of the top sources, the websites now tied with the newspaper. So of the top two sources for providing information to residents, the city is actually the provider of that information source, which really gives you an opportunity to let residents know what you want them to know about key issues. And you can see that the website's gone from being the third now to the second most important service source, and when we actually asked people what their preferred sources was, it was a clear hands-down, Blue Springs magazine and your website. So taking advantage of those two sources of information, I think will be key for the next few years, couple of years, if you want to keep residents informed about what's going on. The other thing we asked folks is what they thought about the pace of different types of development. You probably tell people, hey, it's too fast, too slow, but what does the average person think? And you can see, we looked at industrial, office, single-family, retail, condominiums, and multifamily, and you'll see that the yellow area there in the middle, which is just right, is pretty much the dominant response for most of them outside multifamily. You can see a little too fast for most folks, but for the most part, your overall pace of development is about right. When it comes to use of your Blue Springs, Pink Hill Park drop-off recycling center, about half the folks had never used it, another quarter didn't really know about it, and then you can see of the fourth or so that did know about it, what their frequency of use. So if you're trying to increase utilization of that facility, education through your Blue Springs magazine and website are probably a couple of good places to do that. In addition, we asked whether or not there was a need for a recycling center south of US 40, and you can see a lot of folks really didn't know, and then you can see about a third said yes. One of the interesting things to see this is by location, and as you get further south, there's a greater perceived need for folks. And so that's one of the things, is you may want to be taking a look at that by location rather than just citywide. And when we asked folks about their opinion, which best describes their recycling center schedule or how they, what they currently thought of it, you can see about thirty-eight percent didn't use it, but of those who do, the vast majority, or over half, thought it currently met their needs. And for every person that thought it should be open more days, yet other folks would like it open longer, but from my perspective, it looks like your hours are probably about right, given the responses we got to the survey, but if you want to increase utilization, it's probably an education issue more than necessarily changing your hours of operation. Last thing I'll share with you today is we wanted to get some information about some regional types of projects and what people in the community thought about those, and you can see the level of support for everything from maintaining your existing parks, which was at the top of the list, not quite as regional of an issue, but you can see some of the other things, such as the Missouri Innovation Park, having an outdoor aquatic center, commuter rail, South Area Park and enhancements to the Gray Grounds Park and Lake Remembrance, and none of them really had a lot of opposition outside of commuter rail. You can see either love it or you dislike it, there's very strong opinions on both sides. Probably some opportunities for education for the two at the bottom, you see more than thirty percent of the people really weren't sure, but for the things at the top, the aquatic center on up definitely have fairly strong support for those. So with that, like I said upfront, I think you can feel very great about the accomplishments of the city over the past six years, going back to 2007. The overall results are up significantly again this year, city's clearly addressing the concerns residents have. I think there's opportunities to continue to do better, and mainly, those are in the same areas that you've been working on, maintenance, community planning, traffic flow. You've made progress, but I think there's still opportunities to make even more. So with that, I don't know, Mayor, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from the council to Chris?
Your Honor, you talked about information and where people get it. Did you break that out demographically?
We could. In fact, I know we provided some cross tabs, but if we haven't, we can do that for you.
You say thirty-eight percent get their information from the newspaper. I suspect that anybody under fifty is not getting it from the newspaper.
Yeah, it's definitely an older demographic, and if we haven't done that, we'll provide that for you.
And we didn't see radio on there for some reason. I'm not hurt. All right, all right. Yeah, I think this is maybe a typo, but question forty-two, did you vote in the election of April 2011? That, I would have thought 2012 or twenty...
Oh, I think we actually correct, that's probably a slightly older version that I put in the final report, so.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Well, Chris, I always like having you here when you bear good news.
I wear my flak jacket when I don't, so.
Yeah, and you've done that again, and I think the message I gave the council last time we did one is, we are doing extremely well as a city, and that's just not one entity, that's everybody working together collaboratively to make the city what it is. And although we're doing well, we will not rest on our laurels. We will continue to move ahead because we are a city on the move. Had to get that in. All right, okay. Well, thank you so much, and we look forward to the next one, and where we will continue to make progress in addressing the needs of the residents in our city.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Did you like to make any comments, Mr.? All right, well, that will move us to the next discussion of renewing the Downtown 353 tax abatement.
Your Honor, I want to ask Todd Pelham, the deputy city administrator, to handle the initial discussion on this, but would like to point out that unfortunately, we got the wrong council information form to you in the agenda that went out, but Mr. Pelham had sent out a previous email last week that had the policy that's being proposed tonight, and you do have corrected council information form before you tonight, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pelham.
Thank you, Eric and City Council. Before you deny, we have a discussion item on the recently completed five-year program for the Downtown 353 program. Once that process had completed, the five-year period, two different groups have taken a look at changes to the previous policy, one being the Downtown Alive Group, they have an economic restructuring committee that has been charged to look at the program and to look at ways to effectively utilize the program and to get more participation in the program. After the Downtown Alive Group had vetted the previous program, they forwarded recommendations to the MCRC Board, which is the governing board for this process. They accepted those recommendations after a couple meetings and some lively discussion and some good input. From that board, they voted unanimously to forward this proposal to you tonight for discussion purposes. As you might remember, from, I think in '07 was when this, the previous program was adopted, we spent some time in a work session vetting a lot of these issues about the incentive levels and eligibility of improvements, i.e. interior and exterior costs that might be eligible for the tax abatement program. We also talked about the impact to the school district, this being a property tax abatement on possible residential projects that might be brought forward to the city. We've tried to address that in this proposed policy, but I'd like to turn your attention to what Eric just said, the council information form lists some of those proposed changes. Two of the main things that I'll talk about, I think the main meat of the changes are, in terms of the investment level, is proposed to change from a minimum investment of fifty thousand dollars to five thousand dollars. This change in the range is to promote additional utilization of the program. When Christine and I looked at the previous utilization of the program, we found that a majority of the people that utilized the program had projects under five thousand dollars, over five thousand dollars. So we feel like that that price point to utilize the program is important to downtown business owners as they look to not only change the exterior of their building, but also the interior of their building, so some smaller projects. So that investment level C is proposed to change from fifty thousand to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to five thousand to ninety-nine thousand dollars for that entry-level investment. The second major change in the proposed project would be that interior and exterior costs for new construction and rehabilitation of existing projects would be eligible for the program. We spent a lot of time on this point, I think Councilman Edmondson and Councilman Levesey were briefed on this, but the idea is that we would strongly encourage that the percentage of that investment, exterior to interior, that we would at least shoot for fifty percent of the total project cost go towards the exterior, and that some of the interior costs, such as HVAC improvements or kind of the bones of a facility that might be upgraded to help rental rates in downtown improve, we felt that those costs could be eligible for the program. So those two changes are probably the major changes. The boundaries of the district are not proposed to change. We are not making any changes in how these projects are approved. We got feedback several years ago that the council would like all of these proposals to be sent to the council before the abatement was approved in the previous years. A batch of projects were put on at the end of the year and approved en masse, so we've had that change in the past year's five-year program, but that will not change. So every project that will come forward will be vetted through the MCRC Board, and then also the council board before any abatement is approved. We did a slight change with the filing fee, we lowered that based on some input we got from our external legal counsel. Paul Campo is here, who's provided support for the program over the years, if you have any questions technically, but he does a great job helping support the MCRC Board. But in looking at the legal costs associated with filing these, we felt that that was appropriate too. And again, there are no proposed changes that affect the school district. If someone were to bring forward a residential project for the program, they would be required to sit down with the school district and get their approval before that project moved forward, and that they would have to negotiate some type of pilot payment to the school district. So those are the proposed changes in kind of a high-level summary. Staff is available to answer any questions, but the proposal, before you deny it, would, we are proposing another five-year window under these guidelines to help stimulate some additional investment. As you've seen, the Downtown group is, we're very excited about the organizational structure that they provide. There's a lot of people that would like to utilize the project, the program, but they felt that that entry-level barrier was something that they just couldn't get over. So tonight, we're there to get your feedback on these changes that were vetted, again, through the Downtown Alive Group and then the MCRC Board.
Are there any questions or comments to Mr. Pelham, or others? Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, Your Honor, the, I guess there are a few changes here that do give me pause, the lowering from fifty thousand dollars to five thousand dollars mostly there. Tax abatements, they do, that takes away funding for our teachers, our police officers and firefighters. It's a serious thing, and I chuckled when staff said that, you know, we used to just do them and city council would approve them after the fact, and I think that was a poor policy, to ever think that you just write a blank check for tax abatements saying, hey, you don't have to pay your taxes, and then come back and approve it after the fact. You know, last year, the city council at that time went a bit farther on helping out downtown than I'd seen, and I couldn't quite go there. Federal money dedicated to low-income families and senior citizens, money that the federal government wanted to go to them, we, the city council, gave a hundred thousand dollars to a bank, and taking money from senior citizens, giving it to a bank, I just don't know if that's the right thing that we should be doing. We should be challenging how our tax dollars are used, and to think that five thousand dollars is the threshold for getting your taxes abated, that's all the investment you got to have. I'm concerned with that, and it's just focused here on downtown, there's no other businesses, there's no residential people, homeowners that get this same opportunity, and I'm concerned that the threshold is too low.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Councilman Edmondson?
If I may, since I did, do sit in on that, and actually, it's a downtown business, I feel like I can answer some of those questions. I feel like I can answer some of those questions. The lowering of that range, $50,000, is a pretty big nut to crack for a lot of the small businesses. And if you look at what's downtown, the area that this encompasses, a lot of those are made up of mom-and-pop small businesses. That $50,000 figure is a huge amount of money to try to put into a project. Some of these projects wouldn't even come to that total to begin with. So, lowering it down to the $5,000, I think is going to be advantageous to a lot of people to be able to do some needed repairs, needed upgrades, some improvements to improve the look of the downtown. Our citizen survey we just got indicated that the community is impressed with the moves that we're making downtown, and this is one of those things that will help further that along by lowering that level to where some of those people that can't come up with that big project and the money to fund that big project to get it going, lowering that down to now where they can address that and go. I'm a little bit taken aback that, and I'm sorry, but you're showboating with talking about some projects we did before and throwing it lumping it in here and beating up on one of our local banks. To me, that project was well-discussed, it's well-needed, it will help improve the downtown overall look. It's something that's been, an outcry has been for, for a long time, and I just, I feel bad that you get up on that soapbox and preach on that, on this issue, when we're talking about some other things.
Any comments, Councilman Carter, that you have?
Well, I want, you want to hold yours?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I want to back up a second, maybe take a 30,000-foot level look at this, because I believe downtown needs a game changer. It's why I've supported Light Rail. I think that Light Rail building a station downtown would be a game changer for downtown. This may be chicken soup, it may not hurt, I'm not sure that it helps, and what I'd like to see is, is there a track record? Is this program being used? What's our goal? What's our opportunity for success?
May I?
Yes.
Counselman Carter, I can tell you that this policy has been in place for five years, and during the five-year period, there was one project that took advantage of it. Now, mind you, that was during the period over the last four to five years where financial institutions stopped loaning money on spec projects, some developers went out of business. So, there has not been an opportunity here, and I also think that that was perhaps some of the motivation for reconsidering a lower threshold, is that, given some of the financial conditions and the economy we're dealing with, is that some people couldn't reach that $50,000 minimal investment. But the track record, one project in five years.
Yes, Your Honor, the, I think my concern is more about where the money was taken, but any of these times, you know, this abating taxes impacts teachers, police officers, and firefighters, and I think that we need to look at that hard, you know, especially if we're talking about interior improvements to a business, the trade-offs of funding our police officers versus an interior improvement to a business, I think we need to weigh that carefully and, you know, figure out how we, our policy to me is too low to get in the game.
Councilman Levesey?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to echo sort of what Councilman Carter and Councilman Edmondson had discussed. Really, it comes down to the track record. We have one project, and we don't want to just have this policy just to say we have a policy. We actually want to make an impact and actually get it used. And so, I think this is just some common sense changes that brings it within a range that's reasonable for our community and for our downtown businesses, you know, getting to that $50,000 range, and only one project has been able to do it, and even some of those other ones that have thought about it, that to me is just, it puts everything in perspective to where it comes down to whether or not you're going to continue to run your business or make some investment, and this makes investment a possibility. So, I think it's a lot of good discussion that the MCRC Board had, and I know this wasn't an easy thing they came up with, so I appreciate that they were able to come to unanimous recommendation here and get this moved.
Any other comments, Councilman Corvall, then Councilman Colpepper?
Yes, Your Honor, I just want to point out one thing here. When Councilman Fowler mentioned the taxing entities that are affected by this, I think it's very important to note, and something that we have, over the years, been very careful about, that this policy protects the school district, it doesn't harm the school district. Make sure that they're in agreement with whatever comes forward to us, and we still have the opportunity to vet whether or not there's benefit to the project. So, I think that's an important thing to note.
Councilman Colpepper?
Well, I agree, and I think we have safeguards in place to take care of some misuse of this. One of the things that we're working so hard to do is to bring our city, put it on the map, and bring our downtown, make it the hub, I'm sorry, make it the hub. And we need to do what we can to help the downtown area bring in more tax dollars. You know, if you improve your downtown, you're improving your businesses, and you're going to bring in more tax dollars, more activity downtown. And I know you all are very aware that I'm adamant about getting downtown to be the center of our community. $50,000 is out of the range for so many, and I think we need to make this so it is attainable. I would like to see something, say, other than a goal of at least 50% going to exterior. I think we need to be a little more precise on that, and I also would like to know what type of interior work we're going to allow, whether it be air conditioning units is one thing, but fancy curtains is something else. So, I would like to see that a little more specific.
I think that's great feedback. In the attachment A, we've got a definition of some of those interior costs which are not eligible, which would not include furniture, appliances, inventory, tray, or display fixtures. So, it's defined pretty broadly there, but I do think that with every project being so different, I think the MCRC Board, again, was, they spent a lot of time talking about just what you brought up and how they would vet that, but the stronger language of 50%, like must, must be, that was something that they felt like there might be some cases where the interior improvements, i.e. an HVAC upgrade, or, you know, the gutting of electrical systems within a building, might be categorized as interior improvements, and the project costs might not meet that 50% hard and fast guideline, but that's something, obviously, you guys can talk about, but I think that was, I don't know, Scott Allen, working with our codes group, might have any more insight to that definition, but that was kind of the flair of our discussion.
Other comments, questions?
You know, the uniqueness or personality of most communities you will find in their downtown area. I recall when Councilman Lauer was still a member of this body, and one day I was working, and she said, you need a break, let's go have a cone of ice cream. And so, we came down to the drugstore to get a cone of ice cream, and who did I run into? Some ladies with red hats on from Chillicothe. Then found them out on Adams Dairy Parkway, we found them downtown. And so, when people want to do an exploratory trip to a community, they want to go to where the heart and soul of that community is, and that's their downtown area, and that's why you have so many communities that are revitalizing and trying to bring back that personality to your downtown. And I think with the Downtown Alive and everybody engaged, that you're starting to see Blue Springs downtown come back. When Eloise and I first moved to Blue Springs almost 40 years ago, that's where things were, downtown Blue Springs. And some of you remember that, you know, we didn't have all this other stuff, downtown was it. So, anyway, we can help bring that back, I think that would be a plus. I'm showing my age, I know. Any other comments or questions? If not, we will end the discussion on this, and we will go to Resolution 40-2013.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
All we need is just some motion.
Okay. Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've had a discussion, is there further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Aye.
Okay. Flat and one, motion carries. Next, we have introduction reading of Bill 4253.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill number 4253, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, by adding Section 220.785 to make it unlawful to sell, offer for sale, distribute, possess, ignite, fly, or otherwise use aerial luminaries, commonly known as Chinese Sky Lanterns, ETC.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill number 4253, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, by adding Section 220.785 to make it unlawful to sell, offer for sale, distribute, possess, ignite, fly, or otherwise use aerial luminaries, commonly known as Chinese Sky Lanterns, etc.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Colpepper?
Aye.
Carry unanimously, giving it an ordinance number 4432.
Next, we have introduction reading of Bill 4254.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill number 4254, an ordinance adding a new title, Title IX Parks to the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Yes, discussion, Councilman Edmondson?
Can we have some discussion on this?
Yes.
There's a few things in here, and Dennis, I don't know if you want to address these or not, I have a couple of questions concerning that. Under Section 905-050, solicitation, sales, and commercial use, under Section C, any persons that request and has issued a permit to sell and dispense any merchandise, refreshments, service, food, beverage, sporting goods, supplies, shall obtain and maintain a current city business license pertinent to Code or Chapter 605 and any other requirements, county, state license, and permits. I guess my concern comes up on this with past association with our Barbecue Blazeoff. That's an event that's held within our park, and there's numerous vendors, I would say, I guess you're going to have to classify them as vendors, but there are contestants that compete there, but also sell as a fundraiser that's put on. If I read this right, then they're all going to have to come back and get business licenses here in Blue Springs, or is that some other intent in what I'm reading?
The main intent of this is to stop vendors and merchandise people from coming into the park system. Basically, we have a concessionaire that has a contract in place, and then you have a vendor that drives through the park and tries to sell ice cream. Well, it's defeating the purpose of that vendor having a contract in place, so it's basically stopping that from happening as that contract sits in place with that individual contractor.
Okay, so it's been, you guys talked about this to where, for example, now, if a team was, or this kind of a festival was held, they can still continue what they're doing without these added expenses?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. McDonald?
Maybe finance can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have an exemption for business licenses for people at the Barbecue Blazeoff and a number of other things.
Oh, okay.
That's correct, and I was looking up the exact location where that is noted in our codes, and I'll send it to you.
Okay, I appreciate that. I have several of these, sorry. The other one is in Section 910020, control of sound systems, events, and noises within the park. Essentially, I'm gathering from this, but I want to bring it up and talk about it, is that what we're trying to do is prevent somebody from just inherently having a party with a band, or a DJ, that type of thing. Here again, it goes back to my activity with the Blazeoff. I know some of those teams bring in bands and that type of thing. Is this still going to be allowed, or are they exempt from doing that?
There is an exemption in the ordinance that allows us to permit those beyond the 10 o'clock period. In Section C, it talks about after 10:00 p.m. with a special permit, may be secured for special events before 8:00 a.m. or after 10:00 p.m.
Okay, so if you were hosting some sort of event where you wanted to have a DJ and a PA-type system, that it wouldn't be an issue with that?
You would have to ask for a permit through our department, as long as we approve that permit, then you would be able to do that.
Be okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Our main thing is, we don't want loud, Woodchapel Park, you don't want to have a loud concert going on at midnight when that's more of a residential area, so we need to be cognizant of where these events are being held at so that we don't disturb the residents in those areas, but still allow the events to take place.
Good idea. I can remember, we used to be up at the pool and had some people that weren't happy with some of the loud noise that went on late at night. The smells were great, they loved that, but the noise was tend to be bad. Okay, the other one I have is Section 910.040, and this is the operation of a self-propelled vehicle within the public parks and upon city property. And again, this one comes up with Railroad Park, and we have our concerts that we hold down at Railroad Park, and a great gentleman that helps out down there, Chuck Zubers, runs around with a Segway, and he hands out information and helps with the Parks Department as far as handing out schedules and talks about some of the things, and it's a great asset to have. And again, I'm reading this, and I'm thinking, okay, we just ruled, you can't do that. Is that true, or is there exemptions to that, but I don't know about?
No, that is true, and there's a reason for that. When you start getting into areas where you have large crowds, sometimes you don't know what a little kid's going to do. And kids, a lot of time, don't pay attention, and all of a sudden, you have somebody on a motorized vehicle where kids are running around playing, and all of a sudden, they step out in front of that motorized vehicle, whose fault is it? And so, you're trying to take that issue away from that setting so that you don't have a child who's not paying attention, who's in a park, used to running around, not stepping out in front of something.
Okay, well, I have, I appreciate the safety concern on that. I have some concerns as far as maybe overcontrolling on that deal. The other example I have of that is, we had a rotary bike ride, and it ended at one of our parks, had a big finish there, and several of the people that competed in that, or rode in that ride, it was a charity ride, rode like Weezers or motor-powered bicycles, basically. And we basically are exempting them from being able to enter the park from this ruling. So, in some ways, I think we're kind of overdoing some of this, in my opinion. And I think that's it on my list, so. I appreciate the input from staff, and I look forward, Christine, from your sending to that.
Okay, Bob, what you have?
Sorry, Bob.
Well, I'm just trying, I'm trying to read it as you're talking about it, but basically, this says, you can drive them on regular driveways and parkways, it's just that you just can't ride them all over the creation.
Well, I guess that my interpretation is, a path in a park is not a parkway.
A path in a park is not a parkway?
Well, I'm making sure, Bob, when you say, I'm not talking about outside, in other words, for example, the bicycle, I guess that's what you're trying to pick up on, they can ride it out on the road, but that event ended within the park. They could not enter the park to finish that event if they were riding a motorized bicycle.
If they're on a trail that's designated Adams Dairy Parkway Trail, it's a multi-use trail that's used for bicycling as well as pedestrian walking, that is allowed. You cannot be driving through the grass and all those other areas. So, if it's a designated walking path, biking path, then a bicycle is allowed. Motorized vehicles are not allowed on those, though.
Okay, so if, the other example I can think of would be, like, we used to do the night ride. It originated from one of our parks, went throughout on the public roads, and ended at one of our parks. If somebody elected to ride a vintage bicycle that was motorized, they couldn't theoretically come in and register, they'd have to leave the bicycle outside the park facility, come in and register, and then go act out, and then ride the ride, but never actually either begin or finish with the ride. Again, I'm being nitpicky on this, and I don't mean to be that way, but it's just some examples that come to mind on this.
Well, I mean, I think the night ride event is not made for motorized vehicles. It's a pedestrian bike event.
I don't know if it says that in the rules or not.
Mr. McDonald, would you like to shed some light on some of this?
Well, I already thought I did. You can ride them in parks if you're on a designated area that, where they're allowed. You just can't go cutting across the middle of the park on one. I mean, you can ride them on parkways and driveways or roads that are in parks, but you can't, you can't ride an ATV around like you would out in the country where you're going everywhere.
Okay.
Now, it's clear as mud for me. As long as you're on something that's paved, asphalt, in the park, you're okay, you just As long as you're on something that's paved asphalt in the park, you're okay, you just can't get into the grass.
Not with a motorized vehicle.
With a motorized, right.
Not with a motorized.
But you can, as long as it's paved asphalt and all that, you can ride.
Not a motorized. A bicycle you can, not a motorized. Anything that has a motor that is self-propelled, not by a human being pedaling a bike, running beside a bike, pushing a bike with their feet, you can't ride it with its motor.
So, a car can drive on these, but you can't use...
A car cannot drive on a trail.
No, 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 I'm talking about anything that's paved.
Well, a parking lot, yeah, a parking lot.
But I, to get to parking lot, I got to drive over a road. I can use the motorized stuff.
In, in, yes.
In the park.
In the parking lot. In the parking lot, yes, you can.
You're going to have a heck of a time enforcing this thing. I pity the police department trying to enforce this.
Well, Your Honor...
It's going to get a little confusing.
Your Honor, if I may, just take us back up to 30,000. For just a moment here.
Yes, fine with me.
This is something, and I'm glad Roscoe, our former park director's here, this is something Roscoe and his staff had been working on a long time and had desired to see the city council adopt a set of standard ordinances that would help us, hopefully, better manage our park assets and our programs, and give us some consistency throughout our community. This is the first time you're seeing this, albeit apart from the park board that vetted it, and actually, as an advisory board, recommended it to you. If there are items in here that the council wishes to massage, change, or, you know, loosen up, or create an exemption, certainly, we're willing to take that and make those necessary amendments, and take the feedback that you have. I'm certain there's a lot of other comments about it, but, so I just want to remind you, this is a starting point for a discussion. Ultimately, we'd love to see the council adopt it.
Well, and since I started this discussion, let me say that, that I think this is much needed, and I think we've lacked it for a long time to where we've had issues in the park, and the police department can't respond because there's nothing to respond. I mean, they come to the deal and say there's an issue there, but they don't have an ordinance to enforce to try to control that issue. So, I think it's very much needed. What I was just going through, and hopefully was trying to point out some issues that maybe hadn't been discussed, or I didn't know whether it was discussed or not, and I'm asking for that information, and that's what I'm bringing up. I fully support what you're doing. Don't get me wrong, I fully support what you're doing, and I think it's much needed.
Well, I think with all the questions raised, we need to either table this, or maybe go ahead and first read it and delay third reading, second reading it for another time, to allow your all's input to get back to the Parks Department, so you can, for them to consider that.
And you're still on first reading discussion?
Yeah, we're still on first reading discussion, so we can either have a motion to table it, or we can go ahead and first read it and delay the second reading until the next council meeting, or whatever, yes.
Just on a technical question, if we proceed with first reading, then do the council have to come back with the amendments next time, or can we still reintroduce something as amended from the beginning? Can we bring back a separate document if we've already first read this one, is what I'm asking?
You could certainly talk to myself, or Dennis, Mr. Doble, and talk about what amendments you'd want, and we could prepare them so that you could make them next time.
Would it be easier just to table the whole thing and bring back an entirely different document, so we don't have to do each individual amendment as a council next time?
I guess it depends on how many changes were...
Well, I mean, there is some other discussion, I think, that hasn't been brought up yet, so it may just be simpler to withdraw the original motion, table the entire thing, just bring back another document. That's just a technical question, so I know if we're getting through...
Either way's going to be about the same.
At this point, we've had some things raised, but to give the staff an opportunity to see what we're dealing with, why don't we go ahead and raise those other issues?
Okay.
Yeah, okay. I've got a couple of questions, and I have another issue I want to raise. Specifically, I think Kent kind of alluded to this, we know that the Park Commission has had extensive discussion on some of these items, specifically on the motorized vehicle item. Did they talk about the use of Segways at all? Did that come up?
Yes, sir.
Because I know when I read it, knowing that that is a longtime common feature, that I understand the safety concerns because I actually was a director of a parade unit that operated Segways for five years, so I understand the safety issues associated with them, but it's something that I think the people in the park have come to expect and like, and I don't know that we've had any, any accidents, we may have, I don't know. But I just wanted to make sure that the Park Commission had had an opportunity to consider that what they were recommending here was going to end something that probably would be noticed by people, and whether that would be a positive or negative, I don't know.
They vetted all these, but they didn't particularly discuss that one, there was no discussion on that, that particular item. They went through each one individually, but there was no objection.
It's one of those things that kind of makes sense when you read it, but then when you start thinking about the specifics of what we do in our community, I know, in the case, in my own case, in dealing with safety issues with Segways, with the, with Air Rat Shrine, there were a couple of years where we were actively riding the Segways down at Municipal Auditorium in the midst of very large crowds, and although we never had an accident, we eventually were asked by the city of Kansas City to stop doing that because they were concerned about the safety issues. So, I'm aware of it, and I just thought maybe we should have a little bit of discussion on that. The other item that I wanted to bring up, and I kind of gave you a heads up on this before the meeting tonight, is section 910.010, possession of firearms and projectile shooting devices. I understand that also is a, is a safety-related issue, but I think it also comes into, it comes into the issue of why people might carry firearms in a, in a city park or anywhere within our city. One of those reasons is self-defense, and the concern that I had, as we consider this particular item, is are we taking that into consideration? I know that we probably have people today that at least conceal carry in our parks, and are a problem because they're law-abiding citizens. In my, in my time, I've known, even before we had our concealed carry law, women who carried small pistols in their purse for self-defense, so that if they were out walking and somebody tried to assault them, that was their weapon of choice for protecting themselves. I know there are other things, but I personally would be more supportive of regulating the types of things that you can do in the park, rather than necessarily telling people what they can and cannot do to choose for, for defense purposes. The example that's already in here is hunting. We say we don't want people to be hunting in our parks, I think that's a reasonable thing to do. We also, in our current ordinances, have the ability to, it is unlawful in our city to discharge a weapon, not only in a park, but anywhere within the city. I'm assuming the exception there would be in their own self-defense. So, I'm concerned, I think we need at least have a discussion about whether or not we're doing our citizens a service by telling law-abiding citizens that they don't have the right to carry a defensive weapon before we approve this and make that decision. And I would turn it back over to anybody else who wants to comment.
Councilman Leveson, yes.
Councilman Culpepper, my concerns.
Well, you know, one of the other options we can do is, rather than take a vulnerability, we can refer this back to the Park Commission with our comments, and I think that might be better, to let them know that we appreciate what they do...
Absolutely.
But there are some concerns, and those concerns have been expressed here this evening that they need to take a look at and vet.
Your Honor, as the outgoing council liaison of the Parks Commission, I guess you're taking that over now, we did spend a lot of time talking about these issues and vetting these issues, and the concerns Councilman Edmondson brought up, with the exception of using Segways on park trails, I think you covered with exemptions, and the only other issue I heard was the firearm issue. So, to me, I only heard two issues that need to be referred back.
Is that pretty much consensus, those are the two areas? Segways and the firearms?
Right.
Okay. Why don't we refer that back to them and have them take a look at those, vet it a little bit more, and bring it back, because ultimately, this body is the one that has to approve anything that comes through.
Proceed with your first reading, do you need to...
A motion to refer it back? Mr. McDonald, how should we handle this?
Why don't whoever made the original motion and seconded those people...
Withdraw.
Withdraw theirs, and then we'll just be sitting here, and somebody like the mayor can say that it's referred back to the...
Move to withdraw the first, move to approve on the first reading.
Okay, and who was the second?
That was me. Withdrawn.
Withdrawn. Okay, now it's been withdrawn, and everything's back like it was, and so we need a motion to refer it to the park, or can I just make that judgment?
I think from what's happened, that they'd be happy if we made a judgment.
Refer it back to the Park Commission to consider the things that were brought up here to see.
Thank you.
All right. We got through that.
There you go. It's good discussion.
Wow. Well, that brings us to merril announcements. I do have one, the art that is unknown on Thotste Panda. And I quote, "What's right isn't always popular, and what's popular isn't always right." End quote. Don't have any visitors' appearance forms? We do have an executive session that will accept a motion to go into, and once we have that motion and vote, roll call vote, we will allow about five minutes to allow people to be excused, and then we will convene in an executive session.
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Leveson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll take about a five-minute recess, and then we will convene in an executive session.
[inaudible]